Good evening. The Planning Commission meeting of November 4th, 2020 is called to order. Due to the COVID-19 novel coronavirus and health recommendations from the LA County Health Department, the Planning Commission meeting is being conducted public virtually with no members of the public present. The public is encouraged to watch and participate from the safety of their homes to practice social distancing. The meeting can be viewed on local cable TV and is being streamlined online at the city's website at www.glandelca.gov. For public comments and questions during the meeting, please call 818-937-8100. City staff will be submitting the questions and comments in real time to the appropriate person. Current Planning Commission agendas are available by visiting our website at www.glandelca.gov. Can we have roll call, please?
Commissioner Fuentes?
Present.
Commissioner Lee?
Here.
Commissioner Manassian?
Here.
Commissioner Shabazian?
Here.
Chairperson Trachin?
Here. Next, we have reports regarding posting of the agenda. The agenda for the November 4th, 2020 regular meeting of the Glendale Planning Commission was posted on the bulletin board outside of City Hall. Next, we have approval of minutes. Approval of Planning Commission minutes from October 7th, 2020. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay.
Roll call. Commissioner Fuentes wasn't there. Are we do Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Manassian?
Yes.
And I believe Commissioner Shabazian was not present, so Chairperson Trachin.
Yes. Next, we have oral communication. I don't believe we have any at this time. So then I'll go ahead and move to board and commission member comments. And I'd like to take this time to welcome our new Planning Commissioner Edith Fuentes to the commission. If you would just take a moment to introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about your background, that would be great, and I look forward to working with you on the commission.
Right. Good evening, everyone. Again, Edith Fuentes, former planning and zoning administrator for the city of Glendale. My background is in architecture. I have a master in planning and public administration. And also, I have some other working experience with other cities and communities. First, I just want to say thank you very much to our mayor and city council for giving me this opportunity to serve and help the community. And special thank you to council member Ardi Casacian for his nomination. Secondly, I'm looking forward to working with the staff, glendale commissioners, and of course, trying to be honest to work diligently with everyone. And that's about it. So looking forward to work with all of you. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Welcome, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Welcome, Commissioner Fuentes.
Thank you, Commissioner Chan.
All right. Well, we look forward to working with you. I don't believe we have any old business, so I'll just go ahead and move to new business. Item GPA 2016755 and PZC 2016760. The Planning Commission will make a recommendation to the city council regarding proposed amendments to the downtown specific plan, general plan amendment, and Title 30 of the Glendale municipal code. 1995 zoning code amendment relating generally to standards for junior accessory dwelling units, JADUs, and accessory dwelling units, ADUs. General Plan Amendment Case Number GPA 2016755 and Code Amendment Case Number PZC 2016760. The proposed amendments will be codified and will replace interim urgency ordinance number 5939. And I believe we have a presentation.
Yes, Chair Trachin. Thank you very much. I will get the PowerPoint started.
Yeah, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee, go ahead.
Yeah, before I start on this case, I did check with the city attorney's office. And I'd like to recuse myself from this meeting today. There could be potential, you know, conflict of interest here. I am a licensed contractor, so you know, now or in the future, I may be involved with some of these projects. So I'd like to recuse myself from this meeting.
Understood. Thank you, Commissioner Lee. Do we want to address this sound issue?
I will hold, please. Thank you, Commissioner Lee, and we'll see you next time.
Bye, Commissioner Lee.
Hello, goodbye.
For once, we're gonna have a meeting for a long time, and now you're living here.
Okay, and I'm gonna hold a second while maybe we sort out technical issues. So sit tight for a sec.
Commissioner Fuentes?
Yes.
If you could, try to mute your mic.
Okay.
No. We mute.
I'm sorry, I muted it, so.
So let's. It worked. I think you muted.
Thoughts? Thoughts for sound?
That might have been the issue. Oh, no, I was too quick to jump into.
Okay, we're gonna get started and see how it goes. Please be patient with technical difficulties. Okay, so we are all here tonight to discuss accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units. For a brief background, ADUs really started back in 2017 with state legislature that in 2018, Glendale reviewed and adopted a permanent standards that were consistent with that state law. Fast forward to October of 2019, last year, where the state passed a number of bills related to ADUs. And there's even a new one at the bottom of this list that I will get to later within the presentation. But as a result of this, city council adopted an urgency ordinance with interim standards that we're working with currently. And today's presentation will go over our proposal that is consistent with that state law for our permanent ordinance. I'm gonna generally cover what's in the state law, what it says in our ordinance, and then cover what some minor differences that are different between our current urgency interim ordinance and the proposed ordinance. Generally speaking, government code section 65852.2, as amended. We're gonna pause for one sec. Do you like me to escape? Hold, please. May I ask a question to the commission and anybody logged in? Are they near a TV or anything that might be on that could interfere? And to just check that and turn it off or turn the volume down? I'll give a few seconds for that, and then we will continue. Okay, thank you for your patience. Back to ADUs. The primary components of the state law talk about what allowable zones and development standards that are applicable. I'll go through the mandatory ADUs. There are four specific types, the processing requirements, and development impact fees. Generally speaking, ADUs and junior ADUs must be reviewed ministerially, meaning that there is no discretionary review, there are no hearings permitted. The time to act on an application is 60 days from a complete application, and that is a, that was shortened from 120 days under previous legislation. If a complete application is not acted on within 60 days, it shall be deemed approved, and that takes effect in 2021. ADUs are allowed in all zones that permit residential uses. So this is an expansion from the previous legislation that it includes not only single-family zones but multifamily. This includes, for Glendale, its commercial zones and mixed-use zones that also allow residential uses. You may only restrict the location of an ADU based on adequacy of water and sewer, impact of an ADU on traffic flow, and any public safety concerns. The city cannot require an accessory dwelling unit have an owner occupancy requirement. This is a, I don't know if it's a temporary provision, but it sunsets in 2025. But units built between 2020 and 25, 2025 will remain exempt. An owner occupancy covenant executed prior to January 1st, 2020 is enforceable, and owner occupancy requirement for junior ADUs is a mandate. So, all about junior ADUs. Junior accessory dwelling units are only allowed on lots with a single-family use. So this means it could be in a commercial zone, in theory, and be a single-family, single-family use, and a JADU would be eligible. It must be contained entirely within a single-family residence. It's limited to 500 square feet maximum in size, and there is a limit of one JADU per lot maximum. It is not eligible for 150-square-foot addition for ingress and egress. And as I stated earlier, owner occupancy is required for junior ADUs. And that's where the resident, the owner, either lives in the JADU itself or in the main house, or vice versa. Additions and new detached accessory dwelling units. Permits for the conversion of existing accessory dwelling unit into ADUs are eligible for things like a poolhouse, a cabana, a rec room, a workshop. It's not just garages, so a variety of conversions are allowed. Cities are allowed to regulate development standards, which, you know, include parking, height, setback, landscape design review, et cetera, as it relates to an ADU, but we're prohibited from enforcing a minimum lot size. For setbacks, no setback is required for conversion of existing buildings. So again, not just an existing garage. There could be a guest house, poolhouse, et cetera. No setback is required for any kind of conversion. But no more than a four-foot interior, which is the side and rear setback, common in other cities, shall be required for any additions to make an ADU or just a new detached ADU in general. Minimum and maximum size requirements for ADUs. The minimum size allowed for an efficiency unit is 150 square feet, and the maximum limits allowed to be placed are 850, 850 square feet or 1,000 square feet for ADUs that have two or more bedrooms. As we transition into, my next step is gonna talk about the mandatory, four mandatory ADU situations. The development standards for lot coverage, open space, and floor area ratio must be waived to permit a new construction ADU that is 800 square feet maximum, maximum 16 feet in height, and has a minimum of four feet interior setbacks. So I'm gonna start to go into the description of the four mandatory scenarios for ADUs and kind of think of it, the first two are gonna be for a single-family situation, and the following two will be for a multifamily situation. So regardless of any other provisions, as I stated earlier, the other development standards, a city must approve any residential, an ADU in any residential or mixed-use zone to create any of the following. One ADU and a JADU, and that "and" is underlined, and I'll get to it later in the presentation as it relates to AB 3182 that we're proposing to incorporate now. So you must allow both these situations, one ADU and a junior ADU when it's the converted ADU is in the existing single-family dwelling or an accessory building, it has exterior access, may allow an expansion up to 150 square feet of an existing space only to accommodate ingress and egress for the ADU. This 150-square-foot addition is excluded for junior ADUs, and that the setbacks are sufficient for fire safety. Again, the next mandatory ADU, again, still in a single-family situation, is one detached, new construction ADU on a lot that's either existing or proposed with a single-family unit or single-family residence. Again, not more than 800 square feet in size, a maximum of 16 feet in height, has a minimum four-foot interior setback, which is the side and rear, and may also be combined with a junior ADU that I previously described in the previous slide. Now, we're gonna move on to the mandatory ADU approvals for multifamily scenarios. The multifamily scenarios is when there is more than one unit on a lot, so that it could include a duplex, up to, you know, a 200-unit apartment building. Multiple ADUs are permitted within the existing multifamily building. This, this means conversion of spaces that are not used as livable space, meaning it cannot be within the dwelling unit itself. Examples of this would be a storage room, a boiler room, a laundry room, a rec room, garages. The ADU must meet all building code standards, and the number allowed is 25% of the existing units in the building and one unit, whichever is greater. So for example, if I had an eight unit, if there was an eight-unit property, that site would be eligible for three ADUs. So 25% of eight, two plus the one. And the last mandatory ADU approval for the multifamily situation is, alternative to the previous slide, is not more than two detached ADUs on lots with existing multifamily buildings. Again, you'll see the theme here, with a maximum 16-foot height limit, a minimum of four-foot interior setbacks, but the size of those ADUs would be limited to 850 or 1,000 square feet, depending on the bedroom count. Now we'll move on to parking. The maximum requirement for an ADU is one space per bedroom or per ADU, whichever is less. Cities must allow tandem parking. If, this is the biggest change, if the existing parking area is converted, like somebody proposes to convert their garage to an ADU, no replacement parking is required. Additionally, no parking is required for an ADU that is within a half-mile walking distance of public transit. This includes bus stops, within an architecturally and historically significant district, if the ADU or the junior, the ADU is part of the existing primary residence or a converted accessory building, in areas where on-street parking permits are required but not offered to ADU occupants, if it's within one block of car-share vehicles, when it's a JADU, and when it's a mandatory ADU, no parking is required. Some additional limitations on ADUs. May not require the correction of non-conforming zoning conditions as a condition of approval. You know, fire sprinklers may be required unless they are required in the primary residence. And AB 671 voids any CCNRs that would prohibit or restrict ADUs or JADUs. As for fees, impact fees, ADUs that are less than, less than 750 square feet, so up to 749 square feet or less, no development impact fees are permitted to be collected. When the ADU is 750 square feet or more, it's charged proportionally in relation to the primary dwelling unit or units' square footage. Connection fees and capacity charges, when an ADU or JADU is developed under the mandatory provisions, those four mandatory provisions, no connection fee or capacity charge is required unless it's in conjunction with a new single-family home. All other ADUs, connection fees or capacity charge are, the fee is a proportionate to the burden of the ADU that may require new or separate utility connections. So that, that first part of the presentation is really all of what the existing state law is and what's in our ordinance, in our proposed ordinance. The next few slides, I'm really just gonna highlight a few differences from our interim ordinance and this proposed ordinance. So that's what these next few slides are about. I previously mentioned that AB 3182 was signed just a few short weeks ago, and it would be effective on January 1st, 2021. Because the timing of that coincided with this, it was our decision to incorporate this now. And what that does is it allows an ADU with a JADU, whether that ADU is a detached new construction, which was the, the previous rules, or if that ADU is a conversion within an existing space. So it allows more flexibility. The next is, attached ADU is limited to 50% of the existing primary dwelling. This, the current ordinance failed to include this, but it is in the current legislation. An example of this would be if somebody had a 1,400-square-foot house, and they proposed to do an attached ADU, new construction, that ADU would be limited to 700 square feet. The next provision is a proposal to eliminate ADU additions above a detached garage. This proposal was largely due to privacy concerns that we've heard voiced by neighbors during, during this process, and sometimes some interference with existing overhead power lines. And because some of these proposals with the ADU above the garage, the size of that two-story structure became so massive and out of scale with the existing neighborhoods, it is, it's our recommendation to remove that. And I just want to point out that state law does not require a city to allow an ADU above garage. The next, in a similar vein, is to limit the size of balconies, porches, and patios that would, that largely accompany. Proposals for ADUs and JADUs, we've seen some really unusually large proposals that are really out of scale with the size of, it's meant to be accessory. So the proposal is to limit those amenities, balconies, porches, patios, and the like to 5% of the ADU or 60 square feet, whichever is less. The next concern is double frontage lots, or commonly known as through lots. Currently, new construction ADUs are not allowed in these situations because some lots, there's not very many, but there's some lots that end up with a double frontage. And we have a provision that, that a new ADU can't be between, can't be between the primary front setback and the existing residence. This provision would allow those lots to act more similar to interior lots and locate an ADU either at the side or rear facade, similar to other lots without two-street frontages. Next is junior accessory dwelling units are allowed only within a single-family residence. In the interim ordinance, the interim ordinance allows a JADU, which again is in something that's already existing, limited to 500 square feet. It's either, it was either allowed within the single-family residence or a detached accessory building, such as a guest house or a garage. In developing the permanent ordinance and further review, the state law really specifically limits the location to only within the space of a single-family dwelling. So there is a change from the interim rules to this proposed ordinance as it relates to the location of junior ADUs. And finally, the proposed ordinance is proposing a limit on ADUs for multifamily lots that exceed the mandatory criteria. So I know I covered the, the four mandatory situations, but there could be a case where a multifamily property doesn't want to use any of the mandatory criteria and, and develop something greater because they have the development standards to maybe play with. It's unlikely that many properties have the capacity to do that, but there was no, there's no limit identified. And so our proposal is to limit three, which we think is a reasonable upper limit for situations like that, and it allows more than the state mandate or in the mandatory of two. So that highlights the, the current legislation, some of the differences between our interim ordinance and our, this final proposed recommended ordinance. And so we ask that Planning Commission review the amendments to both Title 30 and the DSP related to ADUs and JADUs, and recommend adoption to city council. I will stop sharing. And I'm available for any questions.
Do any of the commissioners have questions?
I have one question.
Go ahead, Commissioner Manassian.
For the, the commercial or multi-use properties, most of these buildings are older, and the setback, because when I was reviewing the presentation earlier today, it says like, the new setback requirement is four feet. Some of these older buildings don't have that much setbacks. So what's gonna happen? Are they gonna be able to do anything, or they, they're not gonna get approved to do that? Build the ADUs?
Thank you, Commissioner Manassian. Conversion of existing space is permitted regardless of the setback. It's only when there is a proposal for a new construction ADU that the four-foot setback requirement is, is placed.
Thank you.
Commissioner Fuentes? I believe you're on mute.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Kristin, do we have any idea how many pipeline projects do we have? More or less?
I don't have an exact number, but I can give you a, a general outline of, of, since January 1st, through the report I ran, through the end of October, we have had 203 ADU applications that have applied under this interim, interim urgency ordinance. Many of them are at different stages of, of the review process. So while there's not 200 pipeline projects, there, there is certainly a significant handful.
Okay. If and when this ordinance will be approved, do we have any plan of notifying those pipeline projects that they have an option, or they can either go with the old ordinance or accept the new ordinance for their projects?
Typically, when, because we have had a, in the, two years ago, when we did this the last time with an interim ordinance, and then the perm- and then the permanent rules for ADUs, we had the same pipeline project language in, in those ordinances. It, it does give applicants the choice of whether they want to, to continue to move forward with, with the, the standards that they submitted under, or gives them the option of using the, what would be the adopted ordinance. We, the planners generally just work with, with the applicants based on their desire and, and gives them the options.
And just, just to give them an idea that they have an option.
Absolutely.
And, yeah. And I just want to commend the staff for doing what they have done for the sake of efficiency, that you are proposing the modifications enacted herein to be incorporated with the new ordinance. I think that's a step in the right direction. And we, we're saving everybody a lot of time and energy. So thank you for incorporating.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner. Go ahead, Commissioner Shabazian.
Hi, I have a few questions. A few of them are just more clarification. When you were presenting, and this is a state law, one of the items that you mentioned was traffic flow and the influence of traffic flow. How is that going to be measured? Is there any, anything that the state has put in that, that the city is required to look into? Or, or, or what are the standards? Or the parameters of this traffic flow that needs to be, that needs to be allowable, basically? That's my first question.
So if, if there is a concern for traffic flow, it is the city's responsibility to determine that that is a, a safety hazard and the burden would fall on us to prove that. There's, there's no guidance from the state on ADUs and that provision?
I see. Because earlier you mentioned it during the presentation. So I'm assuming at that point, the city would be conducting a traffic study to see if it's, if it's a safety issue, or if, let's say, the applicant can move forward.
That would be the start, yes.
Thank you. Second question. Let me actually pull the presentation. So on this, on the third mandatory ADU approval, the last bullet or sub-bullet when you were going through. So it read must allow 25% of exist, existing units in building and one unit, which, whichever is greater. And then your example was the eight, so having eight units, you'll get two. Is it two plus one? So technically three, so no matter what, you always get a plus one? I just want to make sure that I understand clearly. I know it's, it's through state regulation, but I just wanted to understand it a bit more.
It, it is the 25% and one. So it is the two plus one. It's not the or. But probably whichever is greater is more confusing. I apologize.
No worries, thank you. And one last. So it was the ordinance count. So the, on the last slide before the recommendation, the last point, if you could just go over that one more time, I think I might have not understood it very well. So it's under the proposed ordinance, ordinance continued page, and it says proposed limit of three, a reasonable upper limit, one more than state mandate of two. Is this what I just was talking about? Is that the same?
This is, in a situation like this, this would be a multifamily property that is not using one of the mandatory choices available to them. This is, this is maybe a large multifamily property that would not be limited by a development standard of floor area ratio, landscaping, lot coverage, things like that. So for, what comes to mind is a, is a very large lot, maybe a duplex, a very small duplex. And there is a lot of floor area ratio, lot coverage, landscaping to spare. The proposal for ADUs beyond that mandatory criteria appears to be unlimited in the state law. It is, it is staff's proposal to limit that to three. It gives it one more than what the state mandate is, which is two, which we thought was a reasonable limitation to, to, to perhaps having far more ADUs on one multifamily property than intended.
Thank you.
And members of the Planning Commission and Commissioner Shabazian, if I could just add to what Ms. Asp just said. When she said it, it appears to be unlimited under state law, what that, I should just clarify that state law does not say that it's unlimited, is just silent on what, what happens when someone can meet those development standards. Is there a limit to how many ADUs can be put on the lot? So the state law is silent, which is why we felt that we are on, we believe are on solid legal ground by limiting this to three, which we picked as a, one more than the state, but a, what we believe is a reasonable limitation. And that's it.
I have one more question.
Go ahead, Commissioner Manassas.
This is regarding the cities. How is the city handling all this volume of the applications that they're getting? Do they have enough manpower to handle all these applicants? And because 60 days is the turnaround time, if I got it right. So are they going to be able to handle all that in 60 days?
Well, we, we have to, it's mandated.
Because I get a lot of complaints saying that our city is behind in all that. So I'm just asking, from my knowledge.
I will be honest, it's a challenge, but it's, it's something we have to do.
Do any other commissioners have any questions or comments before I go into my own? So my, most of my questions pertain to the ADU addition above a detached garage and the staff's decision there. Just out of curiosity, do we know, out of the 203 that are under application, how many of those approximately have included a proposal above a garage? Is it a smaller end of that spectrum?
It's certainly on the smaller end of the spectrum. You know, I would put it in the about 10 category. But of those 10, those have, we've heard plenty of, of neighbor concerns.
So have any other cities, I mean, do we have precedent on this for other cities preventing it? Or do they typically just institute a height limit and a size limit like was mentioned in the state's measure?
To mo, to most of my knowledge, our neighboring cities, like Pasadena and LA and, and La Cañada, they're not permitting ADUs above a garage. They're just following the state, the, the, kind of the strictest state standards.
So in the case where, let's say there was a two-story home and a one-story garage, there wouldn't be an exception even though the massing and scale would be aligned with the home potentially?
That's where the problems have occurred, is that the neighbors feel that that, that two-story volume, so close to a property line, is, is the issue.
Okay. My, my only concern on it is that we're limiting a little bit of flexibility and, you know, I would maybe be inclined to get more feedback from neighbor groups on the matter, if that would be possible. And I would just maybe include that in my comments to City Council that potentially we should just make sure that we're all on the same page on this addition. Otherwise, I don't have any further questions.
If I could just comment on that, Chair Trachian. Unfortunately, the, our interim ordinance expires in December 9th. So in order to get this item to the City Council, we had to schedule, we had to sort of backwards plan to get this to you today so that we could get it to City Council December 1 for introduction and then December 8 for adoption. Of course, if City Council wants to make, you know, changes, we'll certainly pass on your comments to them and let them know how you feel about that. But just so you know about the neighbor outreach, that might not be possible.
Understood, thank you for the clarification. Do we have any additional questions or comments from the commissioners? I don't believe so. We don't have anyone calling in.
There are nobody on the phone lines.
At this point in time, then I guess I can open it up for a vote or for deliberation. Do we have a motion from anybody?
I will make the motion, Mr. Jaya.
I'll second that motion.
Would you guys like me to read the motion?
The motion?
If you, yes, please.
Sure. So moved by Commissioner Fuentes, seconded by Commissioner Shabazian, that upon consideration of the proposed ordinances and after reviewing the applicable SEQA exemption outlined in the Planning Commission's staff report dated November 4th, 2020, as well as the records, files, reports, and all documentary evidence submitted with regard to said case number PZC 2016760 and case number PGPA 2016755 to amend Title 30 of the Glendale Municipal Code, 1995, and to amend the downtown specific plan related to establishing standards and ministerial processes for reviewing and approving necessary accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units. The Planning Commission hereby recommends that the City Council adopt the ordinance amending Title 30 and the ordinance amending the DSP as presented, with Commissioner comments provided.
For a vote, Commissioner Fuentes?
Yes.
Commissioner Manassas?
Yes.
Commissioner Shabazian?
Yes.
And Chair Pershant Trachian.
Yes. Do we have any community development department updates?
There are none at this time.
I believe that adjourns the meeting. Welcome again, Commissioner Fuentes. And I guess we look forward to working with you, Commissioner Shabazian?
May I?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yes, I was actually, I was going to ask if the, I, I wanted to actually dedicate tonight's meeting to Artach. Our City Council recently recognized Artach as an independent, you know, nation. And that was something that has been great for a lot of us here in Glendale. And, and there's a lot of information that's going around. I encourage folks, if they're interested, to actually get themselves familiarized with what's going on in Artach. But I would like to dedicate our meeting to Artach, if that's okay with everyone here at the meeting.
Very well said.
Absolutely. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
I believe that adjourns the meeting.
All right, thank you, have a good one, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.
Good guy, Justin's on a baby guard.
Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners.
Bye, thank you, bye.
Thank you, everyone.